Welcome to the Town Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, February 24th, 2022. Time is now 7:02. First item on the agenda, 7:00 PM, public hearing continued from February 10th, 2022, Darkstream LLC. They are requesting it continues to March 10th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, move.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, seconded by Mrs. Zwicker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We've got 10 minutes.
Uh, Mr. Benoit, would you like to pick something?
Sure, would you like to do the decision for Hockhill?
Okay.
There is a draft decision in your folder. Not everybody's folder, because I got to this about a little, uh, this afternoon, but it's in the chairperson's signature folder.
That's right.
This was bounced off the applicant for a couple of minor comments. The corrections were made, and they are satisfied with the language within the decision. So...
Okay.
I was ready to go for the 10 minutes. That could be circulated and signed if you would.
Okay, great. And then there is an accessory apartment extension. We have that in our folder too, right?
We think that's something to retrieve.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Uh...
It's a renewed one?
I think the chair has it.
Mm-hmm.
The accessory apartment.
That's...
Yeah, John, John. Uh, for John O., Christine, do we know those people?
Yep, not exceed 792 square feet. Um, permit start date's gonna be March 9th, 2022, for three years. And the occupant is the mother.
Everything, what's in order? Everything's in order?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'd like to... Well, it's not a motion for...
Yep.
Is it a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the accessory apartment extension for John and Christine Furno at One Stonehill Drive. Um, I don't know what the...
Motion made by Mrs. Sofarat, seconded by Mr. Marks.
Second.
Sorry. Mr. Greco, you're a little late on the trigger.
On the draw.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, awesome. So we can sign that?
You want to pass that around to me, Senator?
I'll use it.
Do you want to pass it?
Yeah, I'm gonna sign it.
Okay. Was that headed for me, or is this...
He's asking for it.
Did you say, did he put this here for me?
No.
Are we passing it?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Oh, I wasn't there, so I can't.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I did the mall, and I did all the other ones, right?
Uh, you didn't have a vote, though.
Okay.
I would just, um...
I just won't do anything.
Your signature's not, yeah, your signature's not needed.
It's not needed anyway.
Thank you. Uh, we also have a voucher.
What was that?
Oh, I already, yeah, and this one's, there's two for Hockhill.
Two for Hockhill. I signed one. I thought it was the Hart...
As long as everyone else signed it.
We approved it, but we didn't sign it, I guess.
Do you want a fee structure?
You would?
Do I want to place a sign on this here?
Yeah.
There you go, for 4 minutes.
Do you want to do a fee structure?
Uh...
You got it going on for mailing?
Should be easy.
Fee schedule increase.
Increase in cost of certified mail.
Oh.
Yeah, everything's...
Hold on a second.
Need a motion on that?
Just, it's just for the mail increase? Okay, all right. Mr. Benoit, any, just this? Okay, all right. So we need to modify our fee schedule in the, the rules and...
It's just bill.
Yeah, so let's, uh, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, fee increase for certified mailing.
From $5 to $7.33 because of that increase on the post office?
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do I bring my own pen?
Nope.
You sure?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, madam chair.
Yes?
No, I'm saying, okay, madam chair. I just wanted you to be able to use that.
Oh, okay. Hey, you missed my first use of the gavel when you were gone.
Who am I missing? I watched everything.
Oh, okay. It's not the same as in person, though.
Yeah, it has more...
Shock value.
More vibrancy. I mean, since that was gone, if I may, madam chair, for you, make a comment that I think our community development director has already placed his stamp on us. And I think having these nameplates, having the gavel, getting organized with his recommendations has really made us a lot more efficient and, uh...
Elevated.
Yeah, I think it's so far so good.
Thank you.
You can come in.
Thank you for the feedback.
Couple of weeks, you can come back.
Well, he was off his probation time.
I know.
He wants to, he has a vision, so we'll go with that.
Through the chair, would it be possible, maybe next meeting, get an update from Bob on, from community development and see what's going on with some of the supposed properties?
Yeah, like an executive summary?
A little update. It's been a while.
We could request that, right?
Unless you know, or...
Through the chair, Mrs. Zwicker. Um, I'm hesitant, not in a, in a sense, because if they're conceptual and not formally filed with our office, I don't believe we should take them into an open meeting yet unless the applicant gives us consent. But, um, we're looking for a very... I mean, I could tell you that we're looking at two more additional large scale warehouses that are in the board.
Okay.
That's... Two more?
All right.
But I don't want to give away anything without applicant consent.
It's just that Bob used to be here every now and then, and we just kind of say, hey, we're kind of anticipating the start time. Well, I thought it was supposed to be, I thought, earlier than what it is now. Uh, and that's the whole reason why, was if it's still things that some of the works are moving forward, or things kind of stopped.
They're moving.
Okay.
They're definitely moving.
All right. No, sounds great.
There's one on our next agenda, and there's one that put out an RFP recently, so they're, uh, they're moving.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear, then.
Okay, time is now 7:11. Moving on, 7:10 PM, public hearing continued from February 10th, 2022, Family Convenience Center application for site plan review in Aquifer Special Permit, 74 Main Street. Good evening, name and address, please?
Good evening, Ray Whitehead, 17 Beacon Road in Webster. Also here is Sam Skoroski, my manager, and Rob Lucier is on the interweb up there for CMG Engineering, our civil engineer. Included in your packet is a letter from the peer reviewer, which I believe gives us an overview of all of the issues that have been back and forth on their comments. There were six items that were unresolved at last meeting. Rob is just trying to very quickly tell you the resolution of those.
Mm-hmm.
So, Rob, could you do that?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Glad to hear it. Thank you. Um, so yeah, as Ray just stated, uh, there were a couple of outlined items and a couple, uh, things that we were discussing at the last meeting. Um, and I guess I can just quickly go over those few items. I believe there were, there were six bigger items that actually reflected some changes in the plan set. So I guess the first item was, uh, I know we discussed receiving comments from the Douglas Fire Department. We were waiting on, on hearing from them, and we did finally receive some, uh, info from the fire chief. So the fire chief would like to see a fire hydrant on site, so we included one. Um, it's located in the front landscape area right off of Main Street. Um, if you want, can show you the exact location.
Need to run through the plan, that center of the building by the street.
Yeah, we have a, the revised set. So, what page do you want?
Okay, it's already off.
Sheet, C3?
Yeah, it, you can see it on sheet C3. It's called out. Um, and then it's also shown on the utility plan, because we're showing, uh, a six inch water line connection. And then I believe it's sheet 7.2 as the construction detail for that. Um, yeah, sheet, C7.2 has the construction detail for the fire hydrant. So we added all that information. Um, the peer reviewer saw it. He didn't have any comments. Um, so that was one of the items that we wanted to address.
Was the fire department specific on the location, or gave you the full permission to put it wherever?
Yeah, with the phone call I had with the chief, we agreed to the purposes of this plan to center it on the property so it was equidistant around everything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my comment to him was, that as before we put it in, we'll revisit, and if he preferred to see it in a different location. It doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
But, but that was the initial quick, let's just put it front and center.
Through, madam chair.
Okay, yep.
While, no, sorry. While you're putting hydrant in, if you can do it, and maybe this is petty, but you know how the standard is to have a little flaggy thing on it in case of snow and being covered, it would just be great to identify it. That's it. It's just a little thing.
Done.
Yep, thank you. Is that something we can...
With flag, yeah.
That's good.
With flag.
Sure thing.
Did you discuss anything with the water commissioners or water department on the hydrant?
No.
Where the other ones that actually put it there?
Um, well, I know...
I guess they would have final approval.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. So I know we did discuss with Bob Sullivan, who was during the tech review meeting regarding, uh, like water pressure and connections.
Yeah.
And he didn't seem to have any issues with any connections along Main Street. Even Rydell Road, we could have had connections as well. Um, so he seemed to think that that would be fine to, to have that. Um, we didn't specifically state anything regarding the fire hydrant itself, but based on the fact that we, he did know that we were gonna have a fire suppression line connected to the convenience store. So I don't anticipate any issues with, um, with adding the hydrant as well. Uh, and he did state that, you know, pressure-wise, we should be all set.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Um, you wouldn't. I don't know if the board has any other comments on the, or questions regarding the fire hydrant. Yeah, we'd be happy to discuss. So I can move on to the next item.
I would just say, just wanted to let him know that a hydrant has been discussed now. Just letting him know about it.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely good.
Thanks.
Okay, you can continue on.
All right, so the next item is the WB62 truck. We discussed this at the last meeting. Um, we just added the WB62 vehicle template to the truck turn figure, which is C8.0. Um, just showing that it can make, you know, the, uh, it can drive around the building, it can access the loading zone and leave the site without mounting any curves or, um, you know, getting into any parking spaces. It can maneuver around the site. So we included that in the truck turn figure. Um, the next item, I don't want to just rush through these if, if the board has any questions or comments. Do you want me to just continue?
I think, yeah, I think that you have agreed to everything that the board requested.
Yes.
So you could just hit the points, and then we can discuss if there's any, I mean, there, you've complied with everything that we've already discussed at last meeting.
Perfect. Okay, so yeah, I can just run through these. So the other item is regarding the quantity of the plants. We did remove the street trees per discussions with the planning of the last meeting. Um, I believe there was a total of 11 trees, and that was the street trees, and then there's also a tree within one of, or in very close proximity to a snow storage area. So that has been highlighted in the revised landscape plan. Um, there is some remaining, uh, plantings in that front landscape area, but they're just small shrubs. Um, and those are around the proposed pylon sign and around the basins, the top of the slope, and also near the air tower and vacuum for, uh, the vehicles. Oh, sorry, not vacuums, the, um, the... Sorry, I forgot what they were called now.
Propane and generator?
I'm sorry, it was the proposed air tower and vacuums, just in the front of the site. And then we also included vegetation screening around the proposed transformer, uh, generator, and propane tanks in the back. So those are just poly bushes. Um, we also submitted the, just some clarification to the sand soils for the stormwater basin. I know that was a very important item that, uh, the peer reviewer definitely needed to get some more information from us, and he was in agreement. So, um, we addressed that with the information that we had with revised soil logs, as well as the peer reviewer that witnessed the soil testing, which was a different peer reviewer. He also, um, confirmed that there were sand soils, uh, during those test visits. And then the last item was the security measures around the basins. Based on our discussions at the last meeting, we removed the fencing around those basins. Uh, so now there isn't any proposed, um, split rail fencing like we previously were showing on the permits.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the board has no regulations on the fencing. It's, um, BMPs, so the board had no opinion on, on that fencing issue. So we weren't, it's not required or excluded. So just want to say, like, the board didn't decide to remove the fence. It was not a requirement of this board, so...
Correct.
So what you're saying, based on the board's discussion, I just want to clarify that, um, it's nothing to do with the board for the surrounding, surrounding the base.
But just to be clear, it will be built without it?
Yes.
Right, okay. And, and that's what the plans show?
Yep.
And, and the one caveat regarding that is, once we're up and running, we, Matt and I discussed it, and, uh, I also talked to Ken about it, the building commissioner. If we deem that there's a risk, we may have to address it, and we'll do so outside of this board with the building.
I think it's out of our purview anyway, for the submittal. Just want to, based on our discussion, that the wording just is, was a little funny to me, so, for the backup.
We don't have a condition to say you have to...
Correct. Yep. So that's great. So board, do we have any questions or comments about the revised plans?
Through the chair, was about that hill.
I, I've looked at that hill. I, Sam scrunched, scrunched down in the snow. I mean, it was not scientific. It's, it's an issue. Now, I know we meet the, the line of sight, the traffic guide.
Yeah.
I feel we meet it, but I agree with you. The problem is, there's some town land, there's my land, and there's the neighbor one.
Yep.
I've talked to John Furno already about the town. It, it could be graded slightly differently and improve that. My land, we can regrade and improve that. I can't speak for my neighbor.
Yes.
Um, our plan is to include that with the traffic study, uh, as well as the stop signs that were requested by, uh, on a butter, and put that all in one package. I will, I don't want to go to the neighbor until I know what we're asking of him.
That's all I can, that's all we can ask for.
Okay.
I appreciate that. At least you're looking at, you know, looked at it and...
Something will be done.
Okay.
But maybe only up to the town line and...
And that's fine. Yeah, any little bit, I think would make a little bit of a difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Thanks.
Anyone else? Aaron?
No.
Just in the hurry.
Mr. Benoit?
No.
Okay.
Overcome.
So, we want to close the hearing first. Um, anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Eddie?
I'll make a motion after we go over here.
Motion made by Mr. Marks?
So moved, seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Zwicker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Entertain a motion for both?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Um, so there's waivers, right?
No, there are no waivers on this. Um, madam chair, boy.
What about this ride?
Just, just one little thing to clarify. So when we advertised this item, we did make mention of the drive-through in the public hearing notice as part of the special permit application. Or on the agenda, we mistakenly left that absent. Because it was covered in the public hearing notice, this, this can still be done as part of the application, stamped in, advertised in the notice with the word "drive-through." So the board this evening would actually be making three votes. One for site plan review, one for the act for special permit, and one for the drive-through.
In accordance with the advertisement.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Marks made the motion. Mr. Zwicker made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Eric, it's the motion to approve.
Yes.
Okay.
Friendly amendment. The motion was to approve. All three, site plan review, Aquifer special permit, drive-through special permit.
With conditions?
With conditions. Okay. All right, and I called it as, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you're all set.
So we have...
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Madam Chair, there's a draft decision in the folder. Uh, Mr. Whitehead and I kind of got to this at the tail end of the day today, but we did go over the, the language together just maybe a half hour ago, and I redrafted it, and he is happy with the language and conditions.
All right, signing up.
If you wish, the five conditions that are listed on the decision, if you want to review those with the board, just to make sure they're consistent with what we talked about.
Sure.
I believe that'd be a good idea.
Okay, so we have five conditions. This project is subject to all conditions of approvals granted by applicable local boards and commissions, as well as state or federal agencies. The project must be constructed in accordance with approved plans. Any modification of the approved plans in excess of minor site plan modification criteria outlined in section 9.4.6 of the Douglas zoning bylaws is subject to additional review and/or approval by the planning board. The applicant must work together with the applicable local and state officials to perform proposed work located within the right-of-way of Route 16 and Rydell Road. The applicant must hire police detail at its own expense to govern traffic flow of Route 16 during construction if deemed necessary, and the appointment of the chief of police. If the applicant intends to revise the landscape plan in front of the business within the first year of operation commencement, the applicant will work with the community development director to ensure no unsafe conditions are created. Anyone want to add anything else? Couple, two little things.
And then you have a four little...
Yep, the rest of the stuff in there.
And the applicant did not request any.
Madam Chair, may I address the...
Sure.
So this will be stamped in with the clerk on Monday. They've already closed town hall for tomorrow for the snowstorm. So we'll get this stamped in on Monday for you, and then there's a 20-day appeal period before you can take the decisions. The registry and other report.
Very good.
Thank you for coming in.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck. Can't wait to see it.
Us too. I really appreciate all the attention you've given us, and I think it's going to be a better project with your help.
No, thank you so much. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
You got a place to be and charge my golf cart when I go over.
For you, I pay duty charges that are yours.
All right, awesome.
That's Ernie's test.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm signing off now.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Happy days.
Okay. Um, Mr. Benoit, do you want to go over anything?
Sure. So number five, ongoing development, letter H, spurred 202 and 206 Maple, definitive subdivision at Noel. Let's get the actual name of this one. So what we have is a 53G account that needs to be replenished.
Mm-hmm.
And there is, uh, it appears that the charity bond for this was, uh, although drafted, never actually obtained from the developer.
Isabella?
No, the name of this one. This is, uh, the Cosmo Realty Group.
Oh, oh, that's the other one with the daughter. That's the one with the daughter.
Maple Street?
That was trying to... Remember he came in with the paperwork and the...
Security, you want to add, is the other house, why?
It was released. One of them was released, right?
There's two houses down there. There's three lots. The third lot was security, right?
Yeah, then, um...
And it has, nothing's been done with that.
Okay.
You know what, it's still open. It means it was, it's the developer.
Oh, okay, all right.
Ultimately, madam chair, what we're asking for is to request that the developer provide an update for us at a future meeting.
Yeah, let's do it. For sure.
Do you have a motion to send the letter?
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, seconded.
Motion made by Mrs. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're welcome.
Further updates, madam chair, is item six, letter D, zoning amendment. You have a healthy pile of these in your packet. What we're looking for this evening is, well, I'll get to that in a second, but ultimately, we have some modifications. Based on the 55-plus bylaw that we have been reviewing, two, two things have occurred since. Number one, I sent this off to a consultant colleague of mine who's been doing housing reviews, master plans, housing production plans for over 30 years. Had a look at a couple of sections of the 55-plus bylaw, and she noted a couple of fair housing potential violations that we have hiding in there. I sent it off to town council, but I'm yet to hear back from.
Okay.
The other item is what you'll see as modifications to section 7.2, 7.6. These are recommendations made by our absent member, Mr. Stevens, who believes that these changes to the flexible development bylaw may replace the need for a 55-plus exclusive bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Send out the first one in our packet.
Yeah.
So I asked the board, uh, really two things here. Number one, if you want to take the time to digest this, it's fine, but the warrant closes on March 4th, and I'd be looking to have a placeholder at town meeting warrant according to the 48, section 5. We have to send this off to the board of selection for their vote to consider it for the warrant, and then it would come back to us to hold a public hearing. So we would have time to review this, consider it anyways, in advance of the public hearing?
I would say to put the placeholder in as it is.
I agree.
And then we can modify it.
So this one will essentially be two placeholders, and one might get pulled from the town meeting floor. One of them's the modification to section 7.2, and the other one would be the creation of the 55-plus bylaw under section 7.4.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
In addition to that, we have, as we discussed at a previous meeting, a change to the section 10 definitions to add, uh, basement elevation height description, a building height description for the building commissioner's, uh, recommendation. So we'd be looking for a, a motion to consider that for placeholder as well.
I'll entertain a motion for the section 10 definitions placeholder. The other item is what you'll see as modifications to section 7.2, 7.6. These are recommendations made by our absent member, Mr. Stevens. He believes that these changes to the flexible development bylaw may replace the need for a 55-plus exclusive bylaw. It's another first one in our pack. So I asked the board, really two things here. Number one, if you want to take the time to digest this, that's fine, but the warrant closes on March 4th. And I'd be looking to have a placeholder at town meeting warrant according to 48, section 5. We have to send this off to the board of selectmen for their vote to consider it for the warrant, and then it would come back to us to hold a public hearing. So we would have time to review this, to consider it anyways in advance of the public hearing.
I would say to put the placeholder in as it is.
I agree.
And then we can modify it.
So this one would essentially be two placeholders, and one might get pulled from the town meeting floor. One of them's the modification to section 7.2, and the other one would be the creation of the 55-plus bylaw under section 7.4.
Okay.
In addition to that, we have, as we discussed at a previous meeting, the change to the section 10 definitions to add basement elevation height description, a building height description for the building commissioners' recommendation. So we'd be looking for a, a motion to consider that for placeholder as well.
I'll entertain a motion for the section 10 definitions placeholder.
So that motion, if someone wants to move it, would be for in compliance with chapter 48, section 5, to provide a letter to the board of selectmen for individual article consideration at the 2022 spring town meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
That's to get a kickback for us for public hearing.
Eventually, yes. So that's section 10.
Yeah, yeah.
Section 9.4 are the changes to the site plan review. These are, excuse me, and they used to be highlighted red, so now I'm failing to see where they are. In 9.4.2, I'm replacing, shall submit five copies with the number 10. In section 9.4.4, same thing, replacing five with 10. And then you can see kind of the last sentence under minor site plan.
Yep.
You see the board can review a minor plan without notice at public hearing. Without notice, the board reserves the right to request such notice following initial review of the proposed plan by majority vote of the board if the board finds the project may impact public health, safety, and welfare. I bounced around, I actually missed one up top. Second sentence, site plan review requires notice at public hearing procedure in accordance with MGL chapter 48, section 11, similar to special permits. So right now, we had nothing in here that says we have to hold public hearings.
Right, okay.
So that, that sentence covers that.
I don't love, like, the minor site plan.
I kind of chucked that one in there. I apologize. But ultimately, it kind of leaves the interpretation up to staff, really. So I, what, the way this would work is if someone had a minor ma that didn't fit the criteria that's outlined above, they could come here, just request the board's audience without the public hearing at first, and then the board can decide if it's more than minor and needs that public hearing.
But if it doesn't meet the criteria, then they should be going for full.
Correct.
So I don't really want to put it in the board's hands. We're not even open, public open, and now we're going to, we're going to vote on if the project may impact public health. So a 500-square-foot construction is, may trigger us to require them to do a full-blown site plan approval. But the bio, the, the regulation says that they don't. So it should just be, then we should take out the criteria then. If we're going to require it anyway, why wouldn't we require it? There could be one possibility of that project impacting safety. So why are we going to decide that if we don't even know what any, you know, what that impact could be, but we're like, oh, it's our opinion? So either it isn't, it's a minor thing, or it's not.
There's one or the other.
I don't think voting, I'm not sure voting for.
And as far as to the challenge, minor, we still, what is the threshold for minor? Like, is that what, like Jason before, it's up to us to decide?
Well, no, the minor to the real special permit is the square footage threshold in the bylaw.
500 through you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Chair. 500 square feet can be, be all, you know, additional to something, could be all the difference in the perspective, presentation, safety, anything to the project, so I.
And I don't know why it says exceed a total gross floor area of 500 square feet, but not exceed a total gross floor area of 2,000. That doesn't.
That's how it reads today.
Yeah, that needs to be modified.
That, yeah.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
We could revisit this second.
So one is net, yeah, one's net and one is gross. So it should be like net 500 and then gross, like, say, whole storage to 2,000. Gross would be gross and.
My intent here was just to make sure the board gets to make that call.
Yeah.
But we could skip this one altogether. I just wanted to have it for discussion and just focus on.
You're taking copies, I understand.
That one's easy. And then making sure we actually get public hearings for site plan review, that one's easy too.
Yeah.
So we'll strike the minor site plan piece and just keep it top two.
And I would like to revise that, if that does say, will exceed but not exceed, will exceed 500, will exceed 500 but not exceed 2,000.
It says between 5 and 2,000.
Yeah. But then just do not to exceed 2,000.
Right.
Unless it's 450 square feet and.
Why have it in there at all?
So it's not a minor site plan, I guess. I would say not, well, I don't know. I would have to think about it a little bit.
It's time to leave. And we're kind of about to time, so just to get it all to work.
Yeah, do a placeholder. So we can, yeah, we can call for the, the vote on that.
So that'd be a motion under chapter 48, section 5, letter of the board of selectmen for individual article for consideration at 2022 spring town meeting, section 9.4.
And I'll entertain a motion without a.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving down the line.
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Um, you have a meeting?
Yeah.
Is it being taped?
Yes.
Is there something we can help you with?
A jump start in the car?
I'm dealing with distress. I have a battery that's dead.
Oh, yeah.
I got cables in the back, but you got.
I have a.
I'm at Pauline Gadlock's house on her knees, and I'm helping her out.
Okay.
And so my processor, my power is going this way instead of that way, so. Okay, so you're going to just.
I think I might have a jumper key.
No, I got a, I got a 20 footer.
No, I have a, like, little machine that dumps you.
Yeah, that doesn't, she's saying you can't get access to the front of the car.
How long are we going to be? I, I didn't, I can do it. Anything else?
We shouldn't be much longer.
Because I, again, I have to get going too, because I got people in my house, so.
We shouldn't be.
I'll wrap it up.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Before we go, is the motion again?
In accordance with chapter 48, section 5, to recommend this to the, the warrant for the selectmen for that. And I already called it, right? It was made.
Yep.
Motioned in, yeah, just a formal recommendation to the board of selectmen for the new articles, for the zoning articles.
The next one we have is the solar draft bylaw. Does the board have any comments on this one?
Please tell.
No.
But this one is, is straight out of the template from the state and tuned to Douglas. I also went over these for a long period of time, probably over a year, with the town of Auburn to make sure this was really catered to, making sure that solar doesn't level forests or isn't. I'll, I'll point that one out specifically. There is an item on here under land clearing and soil erosion impact 6.8.11.2. My intention for doing this, wide-scale clearing of forested areas in excess of 5 acres per construction system prohibited. The idea here is for solar to come in on existing fields, areas that are already cleared. A lot of the feedback that we're getting is folks tend to not like large swaths of forest being leveled all at once for solar arrays. So the purpose of this bylaw is to not only control that aspect of it, but to control things like battery storage, stormwater management, decommissioning bonds, emergency services access, monitoring, reporting.
Oops.
Charity, et cetera. So I have looked for a similar motion on this one, just to get it to the selectmen, and then we can continue to dissect it at a future meeting.
Okay. If I can to the chair, the only reason, which is great, we don't need to be leveling out forests. But if somebody owns a large swath of land, and there's a forest that come in.
Yep.
Give them the permit to clear, cut it, or cut it out, so they weigh about 15 acres or whatever land, and he goes and applies for solar permit. You're not going to deny it?
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Because I mean, that, that's one of the, I, I can own 1,000 acres.
There is a workaround.
And come in and say, hey, I want to clear a cut forest, I want to wipe out 30 acres here.
Right.
And I mean, that's perfectly legal.
Through Madam.
That can be done any day of the week.
You are correct.
I could also make it a fine.
It's discouraging the clearcutting. I think it's not going to be a, yes.
I, I understand what you're saying. I think it's an attitude of ours to put in that, even if it doesn't have teeth. I think we should put it in, because it suggests that we want to be out in front of things if we can, even if they don't have teeth, but at least it shows how we feel about the earth.
And, and it's a double-edged sword, and I concur. The thing is, though, you put something in print that you can't enforce.
But if, they're not going to, they're not going to laugh at us. They're just going to say, we understand your intent, but guess what? We're smarter. We can go around this and let it go around.
And they wouldn't be able to, I mean, obviously, if they apply and then they see that and there's, you know.
Then we know what.
Then they have to pause their application, I guess, until they get approval from VCR.
Right.
True. True, yeah.
For 61B forestry cutting, there are only a lot for removed trees of a certain caliber. Now, I understand what you're saying, where you actually are allowed to clearcut your own lot at this, I understand that. And, but if we can control solar for the use, and they're clearcutting for the use, at least we're out in front of it a little bit. There's, there's one thing that, that really kind of may stop this in its tracks. There's currently a Supreme Justice court case, the City of Waltham against the developer. That case is being heard on March 9th. And there could be a lot of fallout from that, and which could detrimentally inhibit the town's ability to regulate these projects moving forward. So my suggestion was to get this out there and hope that court case goes in our favor. And if it nullifies it, it nullifies.
By the way, I guess the attorney general, review, one way, the other, and that.
I think so.
Just deny it for.
Right.
And to the chair, if I'm not mistaken, this has been brought up a while ago with Jay, and I think the Dover effect, the Dover comes in. Where we have absolutely no.
And that's my.
Once ever. And that's before we go too far.
No, it's not Dover. Dover is religious, I'm just.
But if I'm not mistaken, this was added to it.
I heard it.
This was added to it. And I'd like to find out before we move and waste time on it.
Well, we can vote as, having this as a placeholder, though.
Yes, I feel upon doing that. But before we get into too much depth and detail.
Um, it's agricultural, and people were trying to qualify solar as agricultural. I, that didn't, I believe it was excluded. Commercial farms, commercial solar farms were excluded from that. I'm pretty sure, because Webster did it. They, they are not permitted, so they've not permitted them in certain zones in Webster. And I think that that had changed a bunch of years ago.
No, I agree. I mean, having something that is needed, but I hate wasting hours and hours and hours of something that is, can't get forced.
Yeah, it says 48, section 3, is the Dover amendment, establishes exemptions from zoning for solar panels. I don't know what year this was, 13 years ago. It might have changed. I think there were some cases that had it changed, but I'll entertain a motion to recommend the article.
So moved.
Second.
With the verbiage that Matt, Mr. Benoit would like. Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Sokr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just to piggyback off of section 7.2, which is the changes to the flex development, we still do have the 55-plus bylaw that we may want to consider for a placeholder. One's going to end up happening, one's not, but having the placeholder just in case, even if it gets moved off a town meeting floor would be important. There's a law here as far as fair housing that we need to have that at the town council, so a similar vote.
I'll entertain a motion for recommending to board of selectmen.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have one other that's not here, unfortunately. It is the future road acceptance of the two cul-de-sacs of the Stonegate Development. We have that out for peer review now. This may or may not happen by the spring, given the weather and, and the ability to do the survey for market Hilton. So a placeholder may get pulled from town meeting floor, but since it's underway, it's worth a shot. So I guess I'm looking for a placeholder just for the Stonegate Development road acceptance. It's the two cul-de-sacs that come off of Cobblestone Drive.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
In the same moment, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Make sure I didn't miss any.
You submitted a punch list.
It's peer review right now.
Yep.
It's on, on peer review right now.
The other one. So we got 7.4. Oh, we didn't actually vote for 7.2. I apologize. Pushed that one up.
Which one?
7.2, the flexible development changes proposed by Mr. Stevens.
I thought we.
I thought we did.
We did not.
With the definitions?
Yeah, we did not. We did section 10 first. We didn't.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the revisions to flexible development as submitted.
So moved.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Zwicker's made a motion.
Also.
Second by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. I have one other thing. Under miscellaneous, I don't know if this made it into everyone's folder or not, but I'm putting in a capital request for a community development department, and I'm meeting with the capital committee on Monday. The request that I'm putting in for is to provide us with GIS software for mapping. The last version of GIS software that our department received was through the conservation commission in 2008. Not a single data layer has been updated since, even though we've been renewing the license for the last 15 years.
Oh, my gosh.
Unfortunately.
I thought we were.
For GIS.
I thought water department was doing all the hydrants and stuff, or highway.
There's a lot of components to this. So we have GIS online.
That was, that was stormwater and.
Yeah, basins, catch basins and.
And all that, detention fines.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
This was a specific area that they were in the act.
Right.
And I believe, I believe I'm out with the guys that checked everyone that was on the list, so I believe that, I think that report.
It is the report, but creating it into the map system.
Oh, I thought they were actually.
With the dated software is just simply not going to happen. So that plus all of the RTAS desktop stuff that we have now is no longer going to be serviced by Esri, who's the parent company of this, as of 2026. So what they're doing is they're encouraging folks who have RTAS desktop to purchase the next wave, which is called RTAS Pro, so that you can work with one and slowly train yourself and the folks with you to learn RTAS Pro for when the transition actually occurs. It's a $14 initial cost, but with the state discount through Esri, it's 8,100 for us, $3,000 annual maintenance cost for this. I'm putting this on with capital because this is, having the up-to-date maps, be able to produce these things, it cut back on so many costs for master plans, open space committee, any of these maps that we have to create that we're paying CMRPC for or other agencies for. What I'm looking for this evening is just a motion to support this capital request at the capital meeting on Monday.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Sokr. All those in favor?
Aye.
How much did you say the cost was?
8,100. It's 8,100.
3,000 a year.
And then 3,000 a year after the first full month. Yep.
Does that, does it exceed the threshold where you are talking to capital?
This is the request I'm making. I just was hoping to have the board's support for it. If this might not be FY 2023, this could be a year follow. I just wanted to take my best shot at the board's support from Monday.
So he's going to go to capital?
Yeah.
There's a threshold. You can do stuff without going to capital.
Yeah. Oh, 10K, excuse me, 10K. And this, this exceeds that. At least it does initially with 14,000, the discount, whether or not we get it. So it was a great question.
Oh, okay.
All right. So with the discount, we should be over that, 10K cap.
I sure hope so.
Yeah.
But getting appropriated to 14,000.
Then we would have to get the money anyways.
Right. So that's why I'm asking for that appropriation.
Yeah, understood. That works.
I believe that is all I have.
If anyone does not object, I'm going to hold on the minutes for next time.
How are we making out through the chair on pounds?
Oh, I provided the plans over to the consultant. Just wait for his answer.
Oh, you were able to find the, uh, the plan?
Yeah, I tried to find them.
Awesome. No, that's great. Saves a lot of backtrack.
That's a good question.
No.
Say something.
Trying to.
Mr. Benoit?
No further, nothing further.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.